Thanks. We may, especially for a few.
I'm sorry, for what?
We might for a few of them.
Well, I discovered that if I take off, if I turn on things I'm not using, like most of the photographs, you know, the aerial photographs, if I only leave them turned on for the locations that we're actually working on, it speeds up a lot. So everything that we're not using is turned off. I can turn on things if I need them.
Yeah, probably drains whatever. Yeah, that makes sense.
It's processor speed and it's also probably accessing the disk.
Yeah.
The hard drive on my main machine that I store data on just died.
Oh, that's awful.
It turns out that Carbonite is not quite as perfected a technology as they want you to think. We're going to be able to recover.
Oy. Um. Some computer guys are really good at being able to pull it off.
Well, Jonathan Delson is one of those.
Okay.
And he says he he's not able to get to recover anything from it.
Oh, no.
Mark, who works for me, is pretty good. And when I said Delson, he said, sure, that's who I would take it to if I didn't know what to do. And he doesn't. So Delson will house the drive. And a new one will arrive tomorrow and Monday it'll be installed and then we'll see what Carbonite kept.
Good luck.
Yeah. I'm saying, I'm saying cottage for a hard drive here.
Hi, Peter. Hi, James.
Hello.
Hi, Melissa.
How are you guys?
Hello.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Judy. Hi, James.
Hi, hi.
And Brian's here.
Looks like the only one that's not on is John yet. I didn't hear from him.
Oh, I lost it. What happened?
What did you lose?
I lost everything.
Don't say things like that. I was just talking about my hard drive dying. Not, not the C drive with all the programs on it, but the E drive with all the data on it.
How's it going, Peter?
Okay. Just trying to get this. Aye, aye, aye.
I don't know, Brian. If, if my cat sees your cat, we might have a fight on our hands.
I love your cat. Just sitting there.
Yep.
Peaceful.
Mine is usually up here, but not right now.
Yeah, I know. That's what I like. It just sits there. The world turns and chaos ensues.
Yep. Cats have a sense of priorities.
Here comes John.
Hey, John. Well, guys, I have a cover for my new book. And that was, there was a bit of arm wrestling going on, but it's
Really a cool cover.
That's very exciting, Judith. Congratulations.
You gonna show it to us? Put it on the screen?
Um, yeah.
Are you allowed?
Can you give me screen share?
Yep, you should be set.
You have it.
Good, yeah. Um, let's see.
I know I have a friend who's a writer and she's always like, I can't talk about it.
The book is done. It's at the publishers. Um. That's the cover.
Wow. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It's pretty groovy. I like it.
It's a collage by a woman named Katie McCann and Polly Law. Sent me to her.
Okay. Well done.
Thanks for sharing, Judy. That's congratulations.
Awesome.
It's a book of poems that pretend to be dictionary definitions. And so all the titles are words and they all have the phonetic spelling and the syllabization and the part of speech. And then there are like three or four or five or six or eight or 10 little definitions that aren't really definitions.
Okay, everybody. I believe I see a quorum out there, so I'd like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for November 19th, 2020. And we have a pretty full agenda. So are there any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Um, there were a few emails that really came up until about 5 o'clock this afternoon, but Peter has gotten them. You guys got them all.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll address them as the public hearing comes and mention them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have the minutes from October 29th. If anybody does, if, if there's no questions with it, I'd like to put them on the record, if we could do that.
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
So under Communications and Announcements, we have email and maps from Matt Rudikoff regarding the Tusumpis subdivision, Planning Board Case 19-1217. And as you probably all know, that they've changed their, their their application. And Matt was responding to that. We'll get into more of it later. There's some more emails regarding that. The next one is an email from Campanza, which is a report to the Town Board regarding the 2020 comp plan. And it's a, I don't want to get through it all now, but there was a lot of important things that are in that report. And I'm hoping that on one of our workshops coming up that we will review that report from Ken and put that in our, vote to put it in our comp plan, include it in our comp plan. Had to do with the, you know, the water resources for the town and, and several other main issues. So that's very good. Now we have the 2021 Planning Board Calendar for review. I guess you've all seen it. So I believe we'll just have it approved unless anybody finds an issue with it. So we will accept it as it is. Then we also have this email from the WEC regarding the Tusumpis subdivision, which mostly from Julie Bleelock from, from the WEC saying that they went to the site visit and met with everybody, Tusumpis included. And we're very happy to hear that he's changed his application to not include to going through the wetlands. And they're just going to have, I believe it's just three lots. The one lot doesn't require anything and the other one is a minor amount of of wetland buffer, but we'll deal with that when we go through the review, but it's all good news. And they even say they want to put all the rest of the land in, in a, in a in an easement. Or just, you know, you know, proverb, preserve it.
I would have suggested if he had not already thought of it.
Just to add to that, today at about 5 o'clock, just to add to the Sumpis case, at about 5 o'clock this afternoon, I did receive the submission. So they'll be back on the agenda soon.
Okay, very good. Now, the greatest news probably for everybody is the idea that we've got to get a possible executive order regarding short-term rental cases in front of, currently in front of the Planning Board. In which Melissa has worked very hard with the Town Board and has come up with an agreement that they're going to lump them all together. We don't have to review them or do anything. That it's an executive order because of COVID. That they're just all going to get passed. And we're not going to review them or
A process every individual one, but yes, you guys will.
Lots of work for Melissa. More work for Melissa, less for us.
And I say amen.
So that's, 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 that's very good news. And we have a letter from Sally Gross regarding the Bear Complex up there. And obviously they're doing a lot of work on the Bear Complex. Most of it is renovation and improvements and so on and so forth. But Sally's concerned that they're, that they've changed the site plan in terms of parking and so on, and wishes that they would come before the Planning Board to review their site plan.
We also have received that application today at about 5:00 PM. So we'll go to Ellen for review and they'll be in front of us shortly also, well, in the next few months.
All right, great.
That's has been, is being addressed.
Good, good. Yeah, I've been out there. I had to do some surveying. I had to survey Albert's grave site out. So because there's an easement to the grave site and access to it. But I think it's just basically going to be parking. I don't think there was anything major going on.
The guy who did most of the restoration work is the guy who worked on my house.
Oh, yeah? Oh, well.
I was out there. It's on his trucks. Yes, he does very good work.
Now we have an email from Mary Ann Place regarding, of course, the, the Garden Cafe. And they've withdrawn, thanks to John's suggestion. They've withdrawn their, their application to review the garbage pickup. So I think it's been worked out. So that was John's suggestion to have them withdraw that. And I think it worked out quite well.
Peter, I have a question on that, if I may, without bogging down the meeting. There was still one lingering issue with moving that fence.
They're, they're going to go through the building department and actually build the fence that was supposed to be built years ago on the site plan. They are adhering to the site plan and going back to Ellen.
Okay, so they're going to move that fence that they moved. Okay.
Okay, great. I didn't know that, but that's, that's very good. Now we have a email from Julie Bleelock regarding her short-term rental issue. And which, if you all remember, went through that, her house is on one lot and the two rentals she has is on another lot. And the building department said that you can't have two short-term rentals on one lot. And, but then the building department suggested to her that they combine it as one. And that's what she's going to do. So she's going to be before us to combine the two buildings.
We're gonna, we're gonna put, since she'd already started the process, we're going to stick her in that executive order.
Oh, fantastic.
She will be processed and get her SUP for renting and keeping in compliance.
Fantastic. That's good news. That's good news.
Peter, I have a question on that too, please, if I may. Why, I know we talked about grandfathering them in because they've been doing this for, I think, decades. They run a meticulous operation. It just seems logical that we couldn't figure out something on this.
I agree, but the building department, and that's their call, the zoning enforcement officer says that there's no such thing as grandfathered. And in their codes, there isn't. So yes, I, I agree with you. I, I suggested to the Town Board
We bolstered.
Those day, but anyway.
Peter, Stuart, I have a question. She indicated that she lost it to ZBA in her attempt to get a variance from the, from the code. And so they recommended that she combine the two. But is that a physical combination? I mean, is she going to have to like link up the buildings or what does the combining mean in that, in that?
I, I can answer that.
Okay.
There's two, two separate cabins. It can't be rented as two because it's considered income. It's, it's considered more of a business than short-term rental, the way the law was wrote. So she just has to rent it as a whole entity because they live on the next parcel. And then there's these two units. So it has to be rented, rented as a whole, one, one house for her two to one person. Okay?
Okay. Okay. All right. Is that, is there anything else, Stuart?
No, not from me. Thank you.
Okay. So then we have an email from John and Mary Maurer, who are next door to a, a application we have before us. And I believe they were okay with it, if I remember reading it correctly.
Positive.
And then we have an email from Barbara Badner regarding the same application. And their only issue was parking. They said that they just want to make sure that their parking is kept for them, for them. I think that was their issue. So when we review it, we'll, we'll make sure of that. And then the last two are regarding the, the subdivision we're going to do for Keefe. And one is from Tom Toddler. And one is from a lawyer, Paul Tarano. And one, and they're on the, on the agenda for tonight. So we'll get into those when we review it. But basically their lawyer is saying that there's an issue with the entrance to these properties, passing through a property that isn't theirs, and they were concerned about liability. So I think they've solved it in their new proposed site plan. So now we get to scheduled business. And the first, and these are public hearings. So the first item on the agenda is Wendy Cohen and James Morrison, SUP 20-0578, which is a public hearing to permit the application for mixed use of single-family and retail space in short-term rental in the zoning district located at 30 30 and 32 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. So are the applicants here with us?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you tell the board what it is you would like to do?
Um, well, we are, just want the the designation of mixed use. I guess the previous owner never went through the proper channels to get that taken care of, but the property's been used that way for a very long time. We have two separate buildings and one is our residence. And the other is currently our shop and an Airbnb above it. But before that, it was a gallery and a school and it's, you know, a lot of mixed use.
Okay, you, you did get the message that there was, just to make sure about the parking next to you?
Yeah, we don't need to use that parking.
So that would
Street parking.
The, the issue is with the short-term, the new short-term law rental, they had to come in front of you guys to get the special use permit to have mixed use.
Okay. I, did we get a letter from the building department regarding that?
Yes.
So it was, as far as zoning is concerned, it's okay?
The referral came from them. Yes.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I make a motion to open a public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody here from the public that would like to address this particular application? If not, Melissa, do you have any letters or phone calls regarding?
Going to go through really quickly. You addressed Ms. Badner. She doesn't, she didn't, I can forward you her email. She doesn't want to hurt your business or any kind of anything that you have going on during COVID, but she has concerns about the parking lot area, which it sounds like you spoke to her. Janine and John Maurer had requested your files and they have no problem with anything. So positive here.
So let me poll the board. Is everybody okay with this application?
I do have a question.
Sure, John.
Where do you park?
Well, we have our own parking. Private, two private parts, spots for ourselves. And then any clients of the shop just park in town. There's the alley that they park along the alley or they just park in front of the house.
Okay, so you mean, you have that little pull-off?
Mm-hmm. We have a pull-off.
We have a personal pull-off.
For two cars.
Yeah, for yourselves, yes.
Yeah.
And, but you have a, you also have
Commercial business, they use street parking.
Of course. And what about the Airbnb?
Street parking.
Street? Okay.
Deaney's Alley has parking spots all up and down. I mean, you've been to the flea market. There's I mean, there's, there's parking spaces all up and down. And usually they come at night when nobody's here.
That's a good thing.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions regarding this?
No.
If not, I'd like to, if Stuart would mind, to entertain a motion to pass a resolution.
Okay. Let's see. I think we should also move to close the public hearing. Did we do that?
Oh, yeah, we got to close the public hearing.
The application.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing?
John, don't move. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Stuart. Okay.
I'll propose a motion that the Planning Board approve the application for a mixed use of a single-family retail space in short-term rental in the HC zoning district at 30-32 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock under SUP number 20-0578.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Guys, it's just paperwork. I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, the next one in front of us again is a public hearing with Norman A. Magnuson and John Huber and Lucy Drothing Trust. It's Planning Board Number 20-1221. And it is a hearing for a lot line revision application to transfer four acres from the Magnuson 22.54 acre lot and add it to the Huber driving 10.23 acre lot, establishing two new lots. I don't have the acres here and 14.23 acres located in the R5 zoning district at 119 Mink Hollow Road on Valley View Way. We reviewed this a couple of meetings ago. So is the applicant here?
Lucy's here.
Yep.
Okay. Well, would you mind telling the board again what you would like to do?
Um, well, we're just trying to purchase the four acres that, but our property line are part of our property line. Just to have a little bit of a buffer in front of our house. And that's basically it. It seemed like Norm was willing to, to entertain the idea, so.
Yeah. And we have a letter from the building department saying that all is good. There's, and basically there's no intention for new construction. Is that, is that true?
Correct.
Everything would remain the same. So I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, is there anybody from the public for this particular case at this hearing?
You might call me from the public. I'm the, I'm the Realtor, I'm the pesky Realtor involved in the transaction, Peter Cantine.
Oh, hi, Peter.
He is pesky, isn't he?
So, yeah, we reviewed this, as I said, a couple of weeks ago. So Melissa, is there anybody else from letters or calls?
There isn't. This only, only Mr. Cantine.
Well, he gives it the graces, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And again, I'd like to call on Stuart, who would be so kind as to offer a resolution.
All right, I'd make a motion that the Planning Board approve the lot line revision requested by the applicants under Planning Board Case Number 20-1221, Norman A. Magnuson and John Huber slash Lucy Drothing Trust applicants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Lucy, it's paperwork. I'll be in touch.
Congrats. Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, our next one is another public hearing. And it is Rakishinda Rizki and Brian Rimmer. And this is SUP number 20-0555. And it's a special hearing for a permit application to construct a new house in the scenic overlay in the R5 R8 zoning district located on Jim's Road in Wittenberg. And the SPL is 25.4-3-10, and the rep is Jess Walker. And so Jess, would you like to explain to the Planning Board what's your plan there?
Oh, we presented to this, this, this project back, I don't know, in, in probably February. It's a brand new, single-family home, ground up on a large lot at the end of Jim's Road or, or the second lot in from the end of Jim's Road.
It was March and we had scheduled a public hearing for April and then COVID hit.
Yeah. So you've seen this project before. You asked us at the time to put a swimming pool on the plan, that it would be prudent to put a swimming pool on the plan. So we did. And I believe that you sent people up to the site, possibly to to, to, to see if there are any trees that you wanted to mark or if we were disturbing any sensitive land. I think you've done that. So this is
Who was this rep case? Who was the reps for this case, do you know?
Uh, it was Connor and James.
Okay. Well, I know Connor is very involved in the scenic overlay. And so just first, the, the main issues as Jess knows, are number one of the glazing, which I saw the specs that you showed and the glazing on the south side is within the 25% limit, correct?
Yes.
And of course, all the outside lighting will be dark sky compliant. That's
Of course.
True. So Connor, why don't you explain about keeping the footprint controlled in this case?
Well, basically, if you, I'm trying to pull up your your application now, but what I'm personally working on in trying to get people to adopt as a practice is documenting the canopy that you're, if you have one on your property that faces the scenic overlay. So if you are going to be doing new construction in the scenic overlay, which according to this, you are, we are, we're looking essentially at this point before we have anything, you know, in my opinion, solid as a process, for a commitment not to take down trees that come between you and the outward-facing canopy of the scenic overlay. So what we're working on is, and if you're interested in, because I think it would make, it's not terribly expensive and it can make this process a lot quicker and cleaner. We're working with aerial photographers, drone photographers in the area that we can hook you up with. And you can, you know, take a bid to have a shot taken or several shots taken of the area of disturbance. That can be put, you know, on, on paper. Give us the orientation so we know which way the, again, the outward-facing canopy of the scenic overlay is. And you can make a plan to, as best as you reasonably can, avoid that cutting in that area. Because I mean, you know, glazing and everything is nice, but we're trying to protect the visual integrity of the area. There's a lot between there and the type of high glare scenarios that could make it less than appealing to look on and come see, pay money to come see.
Can you see the map that I put up?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So you see, it's a rather steep property.
Yes.
What shows as green is evergreens. And I see lots of tree shadow in that area down on the south side. So that is a concern.
Yeah, it's in the, in the winter. Now, another, just in case it wasn't brought up, I don't, I'm, maybe you're aware less, but basically, there's the new Woodstock's NRI, the Natural Resource Inventory. You can, I'm sure we can get you a link to it. I've got it here in my email somewhere, but it's a very comprehensive look at parcel by parcel. What natural resources are prevalent and protected in the area and can very quickly and accurately answer a lot of those questions for you. So I would definitely encourage you to check that out as well, the, the NRI.
Okay, I also Okay, um, I also remember looking at the plans, uh, last that, um, there was, uh, some overhang over some of that glazing. There was, uh, I believe right a canopy or something over some of the glazing on, on, on one section of it so that there was a, a bit of mitigation of the existing glazing. Uh, there you go. Jess, I can't hear you.
I'm mute.
Jess, unmute yourself.
Hmm, I still can't hear, but.
There, hi, hi, I'm here.
Okay, Jess, I'm just. Uh, go ahead.
We always have big overhangs, uh, for, for large, large, uh, expanses of glass, so yes.
So there's some mitigation even of the, of the glazing?
Yes, and we want to keep the summer sun out anyway for efficiency purposes.
Is there, is the glazing, um, uh, in any way treated to, uh, you know, prevent reflection?
It is not anti-glare glazing. That, um, that, that, that costs a decent amount of money unless you use a film, which I don't believe will, will last very long. The film installed, sold after the fact, but upgrading glass in a, in a window system like that is, is very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
We also, the, the, we maintain that this house cannot be seen from the public way from, from anywhere really. It's really tucked in. And there are lots of trees in between the open view and the site.
Um, Connor, so if, if we go ahead, uh, for an approval of this case, um, are you suggesting that there's a method by which it can be checked on later on in the future to, to be sure that, um?
Well, uh, again, uh, based on the sample that we took at my house, if we were to, uh, hire a photographer to come and it would probably be a total cost of uh, around two hundred dollars just to have, you know, he'd just take the photos at several different, uh, heights, maybe get a three sixty video at the roof line and that would set us up with a baseline and also give us uh, during any site plan review or, uh, checking just the purview to actually delineate, all right, this is the area where we really want to just stay away from cutting. And that may, uh, and depending on the density, you know, it might not be a terrible concern or, or anything, but, uh, yeah, that's what I would suggest, cause then we'll have a record in case, uh, things don't go as they say they will.
Jess, where, where is the property? Is the pool being proposed? Is it sort of in front of the house or?
Yeah, in front of the house, down, down the hill, towards, towards the view.
Uh, so is that going to involve clearing trees that would expose the, the house more or?
I guess a little bit more, but there are, there are plenty of trees there. Um, and the, the site isn't as steep as it, as it appears in that in that map. Um, I, I, I think that there'll be plenty of trees between the view and the house. And if you were to stand on the site, and I'm sure that we submitted photographs, if you were to stand on site, you'd probably agree.
You did.
Um, so I have a question. Connor, at, at what point would that, would that occur, that the, the photographic?
Well.
Would that be during construction?
No, no, I think it would be prior to construction would be best, cause the, what, what we want is, especially in scenic overlay, though, other cases as well, is just some sort of reference point that doesn't rely on Hudsonia, which is usually three or four years old, something to say, you know, when we started this project, you know, this was the state of the, of the lot. This is, was the purview we agreed upon, or at least the area of disturbance that was agreed upon. And I'm sure based on what you're telling me, uh, if we were to take those photographs and we see there's, you know, dense evergreen coverage between you and the canopy, we'll probably say, oh yeah, you can cut into that a little bit, but there would be also a very clearly delineated boundary, uh, coming back from the canopy where we would try, we would ask you not to cut.
Um, let me just explain to both Jess and, uh, what our real concern is. What we approve now, what, what the site reps see and, and what gets approved for the house now is fine. Our concern is way down the road, years from now.
Yeah.
If that property sells, the house sells and the new owner is unaware of, of, of these restrictions and starts cutting trees and exposes the house. That's what we're trying to, trying to avoid.
And I, I, I found, you know, just based on the couple of times I've gone out and, uh, with my work in the zoning revision committee, cause we were also looking into this in that capacity too. Um, it's a very economic way to, uh, address it. And also, to be frank, your client is going to get some very beautiful pictures of their property, uh, that I'm sure they will find, uh, you know, some other use for as well. So it, it checks all the buttons and it's not, uh, I think, uh, accepted.
If the planning board feels strongly about this, we could work it into the resolution.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna, just ask, um.
Uh, you know, usually we, we submit photographs anyway, so I don't actually see this as, as much different than our, than our usual process. You just have a third party taking the photographs.
We did submit photographs.
Right.
And well, what I, what, and I know, and I understand that and I do appreciate that.
One thing that hasn't been discussed is the site is not steep. It's steep behind the, where we're building and it's steep. Uh, gee, maybe two hundred feet in front of where we're building, but we're building on a relatively flat part of the site and you, you're not going to be able to see this house from anywhere. I, I promise you. If you go there, you can see that.
Um, well, again, my, the, the, uh, just to put a pin in it, the, the point of the aerial photographs is to give us a, a bird's eye view of the actual coverage at the time or, you know, not at the time, but just prior to construction, you know, uh, you know, we have photographs that clients have given us in the past. I'm not saying you are not giving us something that is accurate.
No, we understand.
That the bird's eye view, uh, makes it very, very clear to ev- to everyone, to us, to you guys, to all parties, uh, where the, where the boundaries are and what, uh.
And, and how, and how are the, the, how is the actual site? And what trees we need to cut down, uh, shown in that, in that photograph? Do we then overlay on, on top of that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't, e- even there, uh, if you were to, I found they might, they match up very nicely a lot of the times with the site map, so you can just circle your, we can just essentially transpose your area of disturbance onto the map. Uh, get a, a sort, get a radius out from there of probably, I would think, at somewhere between at least twenty or thirty feet, depending on your coverage, which would, which we would see from the photographs. And just say, okay, yeah, that works, or, you know, maybe see what the, see what the pictures tell us, cause the picture in the sky and the picture on the ground are useful for different reasons.
And would this photographic, uh, exercise need to be done before approval from planning, before we?
Um, I, not necessarily. I think it would be, um.
Be agreed to before?
It would be agreed to submit before construction begins.
Okay, and, you know, is it understood that there'll be some thinning if there are, are, are trees that are diseased or, or or just thinner trees that, 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 that are unattractive, that, that there'll be some thinning?
Well, and again, that, I think, and again, not to be pejorative or anything, but, cause I, you, you have, you have a right to cut down trees like that, a certain amount of trees in total on your property each year, but especially in scenic overlay, we just want to be more.
Yeah, no, we understand.
Dominant. And so in doing this, you can point out to us, you know, you can let us know even, we can show it to the tree committee and they, I'm sure they would agree, but we're not going to take you to task over, you know, taking down diseased saplings, but this is documenting in case, you know, just to make sure that everything is very clear so that when you go and thin out, you know, dead trees, it's not clear. And we will have, uh, again, said, this is the area we need you to be careful of, you know, we can't come back there and find, oh yeah, we took it, you know, four or five dead trees down, yeah, but we also took these two giant oaks. I'm not saying you would do that, but I'm not, but I think we all know it's been done.
This is Brian Normal, if I could chime in please, and, and I understand the applicant's, uh, desire to, you know, to get moving on this, um, whether we like it or not, um, in this area. Applicants are paying for the sins of individuals that have not adhered to rules and regulations. And that combined with, quite frankly, the mass migration to this area. Uh, we are tasked with preserving the environment and the landscape and topography, so, um, in, in, in terms of these aerial uh, photography, we're going, this is something that's going to happen. It's not a question of if, but just when. It may not be a perfect process right now, but, uh, this is our future, so just please understand that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, one other thing I just wanted to bring up, uh, Melissa, I, I think when they made their application for, but do you have uh, your cut sheets for the lights and the colors for the roof inside and do you?
Jess, correct me, but I, I do believe that was all in your initial plans, right?
Yes.
Okay. This, so.
It was pretty thorough. They had, they had photos of the site. I remember that. I mean, I can look right now, but.
Yeah, I, I remember.
They got county approval. I mean, not that that has anything to do with scenic overlay, um, but they, I did that. I, my thought is with, if, if you guys are passionate about this, we can add as a condition, Jess, we can add as a condition to the resolution and then you get it done, submit it to us and then we'll follow through with the resolution.
Okay, does any other members of the planning board have, have any questions or issues regarding this application?
Yeah, this is Stuart. Can you hear me, Peter?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I know that this has been submitted before, but it's been some time since I've I, I don't actually remember. Could the applicant refresh us on the color and materials for the roof of the building to be built? What material is the roof going to be and what's the colors?
Doc, can you answer that?
Sure, sure. Uh, yeah, the roof is, is going to be a charcoal gray. Uh, we find that that kind of disappears in, uh, winter and summer to the best that, um, what we can do.
Asphalt.
Yeah, and the, uh, the house on the, on the, um, downhill side, the, the view side, whatever you want to call it, is going to be like a, uh, warm gray.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's a reflective type, uh, you know, uh, facing that's going to show. Okay, thank you for that. And, and Connor, I just wanted to raise a, a question with you if I could. Are you there?
Is Connor here?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, you're suggesting that this be at, it's been suggested this, the aerial photos, you know, be done uh, that can be done after we give our approval and just make a receipt of them a condition, but what if there's something in the photos that raises a question as to the propriety of, of the site, you know?
Well, that would, that would be the purpose. I mean, uh, approval would be conditional. I, I guess I, I, perhaps I misspoke. I would, I would think condition, we can give conditional approval upon receipt and, you know, vetting of those photographs.
So it'd be, so it'd be subject to review of the, uh, of the photos. And also the question, there's a question in my mind, can the, the photo showing proximity to the canopy, does it matter whether those are taken uh, in the summer as opposed to the wintertime?
Well, I, I, I feel like you know, we're going to have to put boots on the ground and go to a site as it is and look at coverage, whatever, at whatever time of the year this happens. So in the winter, you get the advantage of, like Judy was pointing out before, you can see the, what's evergreen versus what is not. Um, but you, but you know, if you, if you need to, and I feel we should call on them more often, uh, tap the W E C or the tree committee to come with us on these things, to run even these photos by them. Um, just to, you know, maybe get a fresh pair of eyes and say that, yeah, we, it, I don't think it, I think it would be nice to have a winter collection in a way, because that would in a, be useful in knowing. Uh, but I feel like we can get the information we need all year round if we have the right people with us.
If I can point something out, I recently did some exploration of Google Earth and the Google Earth photographs for Woodstock are astonishing. I mean, you can see the striping on handicap parking spaces, which is what I was looking for and crossroads. And it was, at the moment, what is up there is clearly summer canopy. So a comparison of the summer canopy with the information we have from the state, which is a winter, would tell us a lot.
Sure, and, uh, I don't know how long that can last or anything like that, you know, I don't know how long those stay current, but I know, you know, eventually they may, they may not be. Uh, Stu, did that answer your question sufficiently? I'm sorry.
Well, it does, uh, you know, I'm kind of more of a concrete guy. If I have the fellow in front of me, I know what I'm looking at. Uh, did I just lose you?
No, I'm here. Are you there?
Okay.
Well, you know, one thing I could do as part of the mapping stuff is snap a PDF of the site from Googler.
Well, and let me, did, uh, Stu, did you get a chance to see the photos that were taken? I thought I, uh, sent them to the planning board for everyone to take a look at.
Well, uh, I may have looked at them a while ago, but I, I just don't remember them specifically, so I'd have to go back. But if they're in emails, I'll go back, take another look.
Yeah, they should be there.
Okay.
And if not, let me.
I think the very last issue that we've talked about regarding the scenic overlay and, and buildings is, is there a way to be sure that in the future, if there's a new buyer who buys the, the property, that they're aware that they're in the scenic overlay and that there are restrictions of what they can do. They can't change the roof and put a, a metal roof on.
Yeah, I mean, we, as we go, I was hoping, you know, we, if not also at the planning board, we could hand a copy of these types of photos over to, uh, the assessor's office or, you know, have it on file with tax maps and stuff like that. Any major change could warrant, you know, updating the photos, um, and then you have a real, you know, running record of what's happening there.
Mm-hmm.
No more, no more law just sneaking up on us.
We just want to ensure that a future buyer, uh, would be aware that, um, they would have to come back before the planning board, before they cut trees or, or, or did others improvements.
Well, I, I wonder if it should just be, I, I, if that's something, uh, for the Z R C too, just to say that any new construction about, you know, that above an existing roof line um, needs to come before the planning board from the scenic overlay.
Well, I think we. At the moment, still it's three hundred feet or more, right? That's what triggers it, but, um, there's nothing to trigger it about cutting trees or, or anything like that. So, or if you wanted to put a swimming pool, there's one going in now, I get. But in the future, you want to put in a tennis court, let's say, um, that, that that would have to be reviewed, so.
Okay, and that, that's actually giving me some ideas. I'm, uh, I'm moving myself while I write some.
So is there any, anybody else on the board have any other questions?
I, I just have, I just have one question about process. Um, so if we, if we got this conditional approval and went into this photo documentation phase, which could presumably take a month or two, uh, would we be able to get the building permit before those photos are are reviewed, then, mission, or are we adding months to our?
I don't think, I don't, I, I'm, don't mean to, I, I would bet my life on it, but I don't think that you would be looking at a month. Uh, when I was looking into this, I had someone come over. Um, and we made plans because he had, uh, just contracted COVID or, or no, no, he had surgery and was worried about contracting COVID. But he came over, it took an hour and he had the photos to me, uh, that night. Um, it's not a very, um, long process. And I could recommend someone if you want, but I'd rather not. I'd rather you, you know, I don't want to be in the business of, you know, pawning people off, but I imagine, you know, if you look, you'll find there are plenty of real estate and drone photographers in this area who are, you know, all, who are pretty available.
Okay, as a matter of procedure, Melissa, did I open the public hearing?
No.
Okay, so I'd like to.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this case.
Done, moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody from the public out there for this case?
Um, Peter, it's Max San. I wouldn't mind making, hello, everyone, making a brief comment. Max San Resnick from Woodstock Land Conservancy. Just want to thank the planning board for taking the care that they are doing in, in ensuring that the scenic overlay rules are adhered to, because as we know, it's, it seems with some, I guess, new people in town and changes that there seems to be, you know, some, what's the right word? There have been some violations of it, I suppose. And, and I, you know, I don't know that all the professionals, I mean, Les and Jess, you're local, so you, you know this law quite well, but I think sometimes we have other people working on properties and they, you know, are clueless and, and, you know, the problem is that there are homes now visible from other areas and they, and they shouldn't be. So the only thing I would say on this one is I don't know what the view out that the owner is seeing, but I, I just looked on parcel viewer, so it looks like you might be looking across to Wilson. And so I think what you're saying, Jess, is that from Wilson, if wherever they've sight, you've cited the buildings and the pool, from Wilson, you will not be able to view and see those properties and and maybe, I don't know, on Colebrook Road, residences on Colebrook Road, if they're higher up, I mean, I don't know. So I think that's, to me, that's a question, because you'd be surprised with, with how the valleys turn and, and twist when you're out and about up, up at a higher level, you act, one can actually see things that are, you know, shouldn't necessarily be seen. So I guess I'm asking, like, you know, directly way across in the view, is there anything, you know, what is ahead of that view besides Wilson? Are there residences in Colebrook or anything like that that come into view?
This is Les Walker. Hi, Max San. I have photographs in our application that show pictures taken due south, which is Wilson Park, and it's just nothing but thick forest for maybe 200 feet. I mean, we, we would never be able to cut that amount of trees down anyway. You just can't see anything from, and, and the photographs in our application show that. And they were taken in the, I guess they were taken in the fall. The fall. Let me.
So it, and, and again, just.
We can see no other buildings from our site.
Okay, Connor, yeah, you were gonna say.
Sorry. We don't want to cut trees down. We want to cut, the house is situated so that we keep the, really the best trees that are there and cut down nothing but dying saplings as we, or what, or, or whatever, six inch trees and under. We want, we've, we've designed it so that the major trees are a feature.
Good, good. Okay, thank you.
All right. And also, Max, and I think, you know, Connor's idea here to get a photographic aerial record so that we can have something to compare it to in the future is a good, is a good thing. I mean, we want to prevent, we want to prevent it from happening because you can't undo it. So.
Right, right. And, and Brian, I hope you, you understand the questioning. I know, I, I know it's probably a little exacerbating, but it's important. And I think it's part of the reason that people are drawn to our area, you know, is this, you know, balancing homeowner needs and the beauty of the areas.
I absolutely understand. We have another property right down the road on Middleway, and last thing we want to do is make that area less attractive or, or do anything to the conservation or the environment. So we're.
Thank you, thank you.
Hundred percent with you.
Thank you all. Appreciate.
Melissa, are there any comments from written or calls?
I had, I had two inquiries and they were both very positive. Every once in a while, the public enlightens me. They have some good neighbors, it seems like, that they're going to join, and they were happy to welcome them to the neighborhood. And then another neighbor had a few concerns and reached out to Brian and spoke to him, and he was very happy. So all a positive on his neighbor front.
Okay, then I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, Stuart, would you be so kind as to present a resolution to the board?
Okay, so following, following the public hearing, I would move that the planning board approved the special use permit application for the construction of the new house in the scenic overlay described in S U P case number 20-0555. The applicants are Rukshinder Rizvi and Brian Reimer. And motion is to prove the permit application with the understanding that it would be then subject to, if it's approved, it would be subject to a more formal resolution, which may include a condition that aerial photographs be supplied as described during the meeting tonight and subject to such further conditions as the board may impose after reviewing those photos.
Okay. What, sorry, go ahead.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good luck, folks, and hope you build a nice house.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have another public hearing for a case we've reviewed a while ago, and this is for Timothy H. Keefe. Planning Board Case 20-1091C. And it's a public hearing for a subdivision application of a 27.42 acre lot into two parcels of 24.06 acres and 3.36 acres in the R5 zoning district located on 1371 Sawkill Road in Woodstock. So is the applicant or a presenter here for this case? Okay, good, you, we did review this a while ago.
I'm not sure who was waving their hand, though. They're muted.
Tim Keefe's name was on the screen.
Tim is here, but someone was waving, and I'm not sure who he is. Hi.
Hi, my name's Paul Porteraro, and I represent the adjoining landowner.
Okay, Paul, when we ask for the public, then, then that's your time to speak. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so as I said, we looked at this case a while ago and and the Z E O approves that everything is correct. It's, the acreage is correct. We saw the maps and that was all good. And the only thing has come up, we've got some emails regarding the access. And I know that the, the the, the highway department has approved the curb cut, but I believe there was a question about the access going over someone else's property. Do I have that correct? And that's been solved by a new proposed drawing. Is that correct?
Who are you speaking to?
Well, Tim, you can answer it. I just wanted to make sure. I was a little confused as to the access, because I, I see on the map that there's a, a right of way that goes through the property on up. But the actual road access, I think you moved in the new, in the new plot that you presented?
Yeah, that plot that we presented is, is the, actually was on the original one, is it comes directly off of Sawkill Road, right directly onto the lot. So it doesn't come off the other access that you were talking about that goes up through the middle of the property.
Okay. All right. So is there anybody on the board have any questions? And we did review it before, but does anybody have any questions about the access at this point?
Peter, can you open the public hearing?
I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, so an entertaining motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue.
Well, at the moment, is there anybody from the public that, that has any questions on this case? I heard, I see.
Paul, it's your turn.
Yes, can you, all right, can you hear me? Yep. Okay, yes, I do have concern.
Please tell the planning board who you are.
I'm sorry. My name is Ferrero. I'm the one that wrote the letter to the planning board regarding the access over my client's property. It's a, as you can see, it's a very, it's less than a tenth of an acre. And if I understood Mr. Keefe, what he just said is he amended the site plan to move the driveways off that parcel and on to the signage that he has set forth on the map that, that was provided to me by my client, which seems to be called the map subdivision lands of Timothy Keefe. It's, there's, I believe, 30 feet of road signage? 100 feet of road furniture. So is that where the, the new access is going to be?
Yeah, new access is actually further down the road. It's at the very southern end of the, the lot itself. Pretty much at the opposite end of where the, the access was before.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, that's the same access that's shared by Nicole Van Hozen, right?
Right, that ex, that's not the access for this new lot at all.
All right, so the access, so there, you do show an access almost like a loop of a driveway. So are you talking, are you saying that that is no longer the intent that those, that that 3.6.4 acre parcel will not be utilizing that access over where Nicole Van Hauser is?
That's correct. That was put in there when he was clearing the trees out and whatnot in there to get the dead stuff out and didn't have the curb cut off the county road at that point. So he just used the, that exit point. But that, that will not be the access point for the house at all. I actually, I actually was still on a strip of land right in between there, and there will be no, no driveway across that.
Right, so that's strip of land between Nicole Van Hauser and the three point, and the, and the three acre parcel. That will, that will not be used by, that little strip there will not be used at, as any form of access for the three acre parcel.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, so now, still concerned about the access over my client's property for the remaining 24 acre parcel, which is lot two on your map, and then the two other parcels to the north. So it seems to me that you have, you are accessing through four parcels by, off that driveway next to Nicole Van Hoosen's parcel. And we were hoping that you would clear that up and move that driveway, those, that driveway access on to that strip of, of land between Nicole and the 6.3, or 3.3 acre parcel that you're subdividing.
The access there originally went back to the, I guess it was the Johnson house, in fact, in there, when we bought it, that was the access into that house, and it's been there for, I don't know, 100 years or whatever. So at that point, it was, it was an existing access for the house that was there, built back in the 60s or the 70s, whatever it was.
Okay.
Any, any further, any further subdivision or any further construction would, that's why I reserved that 100 foot strip between the current subdivision and what's there to, to have access to the main road. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't use that same access right away that you're talking about right now.
All right, so so there is no easement or right of way for either Nicole or for, or for the owner, you of the other parcels to cross that point 008 acre portion, the small one. And you can really see it on the map that is under exhibit D, where it, where it shows now or formerly 1344 Sawkill LLC. And this is from the, the planning board map filed in, in, in June of 2018. So I, I doesn't, I, I think what I'm saying is, is even though maybe the access has been there for 100 years, there is no recorded right to use that as an access by you or by Nicole. And what it does by remaining there, it creates, as I say in my letter, liability for my client. Because as of the, so the four parcels that will be using, Nicole and the other four that you have, or the three that you have remaining, will be using that small sliver of property, which is owned by my client. And if there's an accident on that road because of someone entering or exiting the driveway or exiting or entering Sawkill Road, my client is the one that's going to be sued, because any lawyer who's going to do his due diligence is going to see that the property owner is my client and not you. So my client will get, will get sued and you won't. So we believe that's, you know, patently unfair. So we're requesting that you, as part of your map and part of the approval, that you relocate that access for the rest of your parcels and Nicole's parcel on to that strip of land between Nicole's parcel and the 3.3 acre subdivided parcel.
Okay, that's something I can't answer at this point in time. I'm not an attorney, so I couldn't, I can't give you any legal ramifications to that, but we can certainly look into that and discuss this further if you want.
Okay, that'd be very good. We'd like to discuss that further.
At some, you know, at some point. I don't know if that's gonna, has any effect on this lot that we're subdividing off, because it's gonna have its own access right now.
And speaking of that, is, do you have a curb cut approval now from the highway department for your new?
Yes, yes, it's a county curb cut approval. It's in the file, I believe. I submitted that with the application.
Mr. Keefe, have I got the right piece of property on the map?
Uh, let's see. Let's find the map here.
No, that's looking on, on your computer.
I'm looking.
The yellow outline.
That's it, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, does anybody else on the board have any questions regarding this application?
This is Stuart Lipkin. Could I just ask the attorney to identify who is, who is your client in this matter?
Eric Kirschman, and he owns 1344 Sawkill LLC.
Thank you, sir.
So he bought the property from some Adam Lindeman at 2017 or so.
All right. All right. Well, if nobody else has any questions, Stuart would be so kind as to propose a resolution for this case.
Peter, you can close the public hearing first.
Oh.
Oh, and hang on, I, just a few more comments that I had. Pause. All right, other public comments. Tom Tobler wrote a note about, concerned about the large trailers and tractors on the property. I'm not sure if he's on or not. Okay, so Tom may want to speak. Gary Schussler had wrote in and he was fine with it. Paul is here representing Eric Kirschman. That's all I got. But Tom may want to speak before we close the public hearing.
Yeah, hi, real quickly. Good evening. Yeah, just, I'm glad this isn't a scenic overlay.
I'm glad this isn't an scenic overlay, there's been a lot of work been going on over there, I didn't realize the house was going in, I had no idea what was happening, but there's been a large trailer there for a long time, and I didn't quite understand having a trailer like that in a residential area for storage. If it's only gonna be there for the construction of the house, I understand that, they may have building supplies in it, but that was my concern.
Tim?
That's it, it was there, it's just a storage unit right now for, uh, till the house gets built, and then it gets, gets removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, from the public have any questions? If not, an entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Stuart, now, would you be so kind to make a proposal?
Before I do that, Peter, I would just like to get input from yourself and anyone else on the board, does anyone feel that, the road issue and the potential liability issue of, uh, the neighbor, um, does that pose any issue for this subdivision, uh, that ought to just give them some time to see they can work that out? Does it affect the subdivision application or not, I guess that's?
Peter, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I've gathered in my, by the way, guys, it's been a year as of the eighteenth, that I've been with you. Mr. Keith, um, right of way is a civil matter, and if Tim and the lawyers wanna, it's, it's a civil matter, we get calls all the time about right of way, it's a civil matter between the parties, it's not a planning board issue.
All right.
Peter? Peter, help me out. The chairman with experience.
Well, in answer Stuart's question, uh, as far as this particular, uh, three acre subdivision, the access now uh, is correct and does have, uh, um, town and highway, um, curb cut approval. Um, so this lot is, is fine, um, for what's in front of us.
But, but what's also in front of you is the other lot, the remaining lot, so your subdivision is for two lots. So the one lot, the three acre lot, you're correct, will not be using, uh, my client's property, but the remaining lot will.
But as, as Melissa just pointed out, that's, that's a legal issue. That's.
It's an existing right.
Well, but so, but I'm asking you as, as a practical matter, as reviewing a subdivision map.
You're in court on that.
You know, you have the right to locate, look, you know, the, a- a- as I said in my letter, you know, why should Mr. Keith have the right to use my client's property at his access when you have the opportunity to change that now as part of your condition to subdivision approval? And you're saying, no, uh, you know, you can work that out later, well, you know, we prefer to work it out now.
But does, I have a question against Stuart Lipkin, does Mr. Keith presently have the right to use the area that you're talking about? Does he have the right of way now?
No, he does.
Yes, we do, we've been using that right of way for the last, since my father bought it in the seventies, so I don't know where, where, uh, you know, we could dispute, we could dispute this all night long, and, but this is not the, not the venue for this, this is a.
All right, this is the venue for this, this certainly is the venue.
No, it's not, because you're saying if, if they.
Because, because you.
Then I can't, you're saying, they're not to say I'm not to use the, the, uh, rest of the acreage, which I've been using for the last, you know, fifty years.
Well, you're not letting me finish, you know, my client would like you not to be on that parcel. You know, and he certainly has the right to have you not on that parcel, and he has the right to the, to say to the planning board as part of your approval, remove that driveway. So if you're going to tell me, uh, we're not gonna do it, then, then, you know, then.
I just said we weren't gonna do it, I said, well, I have to contact my attorney and see where we stand with this, this, you know, we're talking about like a little twenty foot piece of strip along the road that.
You also. Liability for my client if someone gets killed there, you know, why should that be on him?
Well, two things come to mind, um, is there a possibility to transfer that property to so that it's not your client's, I mean, is that little tiny strip possible that Keith could purchase or, or, or get?
I have not discussed that with my client at all.
Um, but your, your point is, is, is well taken, that, um, in making the subdivision, um, we're providing access to both lots.
Yes.
And the one lot, the three, the new lot, the three acre lot is fine, we now have a new road and, and it's, it's no issue with it. But the other lot, the existing lot, has an existing road over that, and it does become kind of a legal question, i- if there, is there an actual right of way permitted? Or is there a, um, or, you know, or, or is there a, um,
Use Ryan's.
Yes, yeah, I, I, that, I don't know what the deeds read, um.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, duty.
I have a memory, and I'm not sure I know the legal word for this, that if someone is allowed to use an easement for a long period of time, it becomes a kind of de facto easement, legal, legal right, isn't that the case, Stuart?
Well, that's, that's sort of correct, um, because if it's an easement by necessity, yes. If the only way you can get to that property is to cross over someone else's property, and you've been using it for a long time, I agree, but thirty feet away is a hundred feet of road frontage for that lot. So there's really no easement by necessity, it's easement by, by ease, really, for, for Mr. Keith, because now he doesn't have to spend the money to move the road or the driveway access to his property, where rightfully should be, should be on his property, my client should not have to have the liability of, of the access where that road is.
So would your client be willing to give Keith an easement? That way you wouldn't have the liability, if, if your client gave him an easement.
The liability still exists, the liability.
Have an easement. If he has an easement, then, then you, then your client is fine.
No, that's not true, that's not true, he's still.
I'm not a lawyer, so I.
He's still an owner of the, he still owns the property, so he's, he will be named as a defendant as the property owner.
That is true, actually, if you have an easement, you actually are not liable, I, I have a property that I have an easement with, that I got when I purchased the property because of that.
Yeah, I would think if your client were to give Keith an easement, then that would relieve them of any liability.
An easement of record as opposed to the current situation.
Right. Right, but that's, um.
Well, he'd have to need, you know, he'd need to be named as additional insured under, under the, under the policy.
Peter, I, I have one other question, if, if we grant this application, um, and allow the subdivision, is that gonna increase the usage of, uh, people crossing over this twenty foot strip to get to the property, or is it gonna have no effect?
It'd have no effect from what we're hearing.
There's no effect, because they have their own, they have their own access right now.
Okay.
See, we're not granting a new access to the original Keith.
Right.
It already exists, whether it exists or illegally, we don't know, but it exists.
Well, look, you know, all I can say is, what my client, I believe, would like to do is, before you approve this map, at least allow us to have a conversation with Mr. Keith, uh, to see if we can work this out. Uh, uh, because if you approve the map tonight, then it's kinda too late, if you know what I mean.
So why hasn't that happened before?
I, I have no idea, I got a call from, uh, Eric, uh, the other day, uh, you know, he's all over the place, so, uh, that's all I can tell you, I just found out about it, I've not known about it.
So would you be willing to, uh, to, if we recess this for a little while, would you be willing to work with Tim Keith to try to solve this between yourselves?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
I mean, we can postpone this, uh, give you guys what, what you need, a month, or, or, I know, Melissa, you, you've got the schedule, I don't know what fits.
Yeah, we don't, and you know, we don't determine when I'm gonna do the public hearings until, uh, every beginning of the month when Governor Cuomo comes out, but we, we could definitely bring them back if, if Tim is on board with that.
Well, not really, uh, the only question I would have, if we don't agree on anything, is this gonna put us right back where we are right now, a month from now?
Uh, I assume it would, yes, it would.
Not if you dialogue and figure it out, but I think we should give you a month to do that, it sounds like, obviously, there's things that need to be discussed. And, uh, and so my, my suggestion and the board suggestion is to do that, and let's come back in a month, and hopefully you will have figured it out.
The other thing, you know, we as the planning board can do is consult our land use attorney, um, to, to give the planning board some input, um, as to what we can do correctly or not in this case.
Of course, this is Stuart again, and I'm just, just wanna make a further comment. With everybody consulting their own consultants, you never know what the landscape's gonna look like when we all come back, and so it, it would be, I would think, to both parties' benefits, both Mr. Keith and uh, Eric and his attorney, to try and come to some understanding so that when you do come back, or soon when we adjourn briefly, uh, that this issue is removed, and then it's all that's left is a, a clean application with no issues, apparently, uh, which will be easier to get granted than if this thing is still hanging out there.
I agree with Stuart.
Trying to be practical here, Mr. Keith, and, and from, from where I sit. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Technically, is that a motion to table?
I didn't make a motion, you wanna make a motion?
Oh, go ahead, Stuart.
I would make a motion to continue this matter, uh, to the next available date, to give the party, the Mr. Keith and uh, the, the adjoining party, Mr. Eric, I remember his last name, needing to resolve the, the outstanding difference.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, gentlemen, I hope you get it all worked out adequately, uh, good luck.
And be in touch with me when we're, when we're ready to go back, and we'll do it again.
Do we know what the next date's going to be, or?
Good evening.
Okay, I think I need to close the public hearing. So make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Well, are we gonna set another date now, or how are we gonna do this?
I, I haven't been setting them, because every beginning of the month, I see if we're Zoom or if we're in person. So I've been arranging them kind of on my time, when I figure out the schedule, and kind of scheduling meeting to meeting. So it really depends on when they give me a call, and then I look at the schedule and see when I can fit them in.
Okay.
Right. I'll bet my planning board salary that, uh, we're gonna be doing this probably through most of twenty twenty-one.
Brian, I agree with you, but every beginning of the month, I still look at the governors and make sure.
All right, folks. So now.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, good luck.
All right, good luck.
So now we have a sketch plan review uh, between Joseph Lilick and Laura Oswald, in his planning board case twenty dash one one eight zero A. And it's a sketch plan review of a lot line revision application to transfer four point zero four four acres from Six Downer Lane, uh, originally eight point eight four two acres, and to add to fifty-two Laura Lane, originally seven point two oh five acres, establishing two lots, the four point seven nine and eleven point two four acres located in the R eight and R three zoning districts in Woodstock. Now, if you guys have seen the map, there's been a lot of lot line revisions going on, on this piece of property. And I don't see any issues with it, but my question is, and I guess Ron, if he's here, could answer it, what is the idea, what's the purpose of this particular land?
Oh, he's here, he's, he's the owner.
Hi. Hi. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for adding us on to the agenda today, I know you've had a busy, uh, busy night. Um, I'm also an attorney, and, and Ron is retired, so I'm taking over my own representation, probably foolishly. Um, but, um, so we, um, have owned the lot, uh, fifty-two Laura Lane for about twenty years. Um, we purchased, um, a few acres, uh, of the original, uh, Downer, uh, Lane Lot, I think about six or seven years ago from Pam Marvin, and joined that with the property of fifty-two Laura Lane, and I was in discussions with her to purchase, um, an additional four acres and, uh, um, and at, while we were working out the details of it, she passed away, and her uh, children, uh, children approached me about purchasing the entire lot, including um, the small home that's on Six Downer. So, um, we have always been interested only in the land uh, that it borders our property to, um, create a buffer not to have any developments, uh, on the land that is adjacent to our current property. Uh, so our, uh, the purpose of this is to subdivide it, um, take, uh, the portion, uh, that's adjacent to our current property and join it uh, with fifty-two Laura Lane. Um, we did go to the zoning board, and at the zoning board agreed to a non-development clause on the acres that we're taking to join with fifty-two Laura Lane, we have, um, it's a condition of the zoning board approval, and we have no, uh, interest or plan in developing it. Um, and then we're going to sell the small house with the, um, for some odd acres that are remaining with the, the small house on Downer Lane.
Okay, I, I read the ZBA's ruling, um, I was a little confused, they said that they would approve the undersized lot, but it looked to me like they said that they would make it unbuildable.
They made the portion that is, we're taking to join to our lot, unbuildable.
Okay, so I got that wrong, the remaining lot, the undersized lot is buildable?
Well, there's already a home on there.
I got you, okay.
So, um, they didn't put any condition on that, uh, the undersized lot with the home that's at, at Six Downer Lane right now.
I see, I see. Okay, members of the board have questions regarding this. It's a complicated map to look at, I'll assure you, but it's, it's a very busy map, but, um, it seems that, you know, the ZBA has approved the idea, and, um, and, uh, and I believe that the, uh, building inspector has also approved it. So it seems that it's, uh, I don't see any issues with it unless anybody else on the planning board has any questions regarding.
Stuart here, Peter, does the, does the drawing that they've given us, does it have all the necessary information for us to approve it?
Yeah, that's why I say it's a, it's a real busy plot, but yes, it, it has everything on it. The last thing I didn't check was to make sure that the wells and septics were properly distanced, but I believe it was. And, uh, the only other issue that we usually have to look at with a new lot line is to make sure that, um, that the setbacks are correct, so that, um, the lot line is not, the new lot line is not too near a building. And that's usually the issue that we have to be concerned with. And I believe it isn't, for, for, for my memory.
Yeah, there, there are no structures close to the lot line, uh, revision, and the the septic system for our property is on the complete other side of where the subdivision is, and, uh, um, the septic for the Six Downer is, uh, basically four acre, you know, it's at the other end of the four acre lot that's being subdivided.
Okay, so basically the well is at least a hundred feet from the septic, that's what we wanna make sure.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yep.
So, Mr. Lilick, you're, you're picking the bottom part of this right hand lot that are drawn there?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Can you see the, the area?
Yeah.
For those two yellow outlines, you own the left hand one, and you're buying.
Correct, that, that's, right, the left hand lot is fifty-two Lar Lane that we own.
Right.
Um, there's, uh, if you can see on that lot, there's a pond.
Yep.
Uh, on the top part of it.
Right.
Um, basically, from where the pond is to the, um, top edge of that lot, uh, those were the original, I think, three and a half or four acres that we purchased from Pam Marvin. Um, and then we purchased the lot to the right from her about. And then we purchased the lot to the right from her about a year and a half ago.
So you're subdividing my move.
The right hand lot.
This part.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well.
It's not a subdivision, it's a lot line revision.
Lot line revision, sorry.
Which technically is a subdivision. So Melissa, again, in this case, the question comes up of when you can, you know, get a public hearing.
So if I have the planning board's approval, I will schedule a public hearing as soon as I know. Schedule availability wise, I will be in touch with Mr. Bellick, do I have public board approval on that?
Okay.
I move approval to set a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, Melissa, you've got it.
All right, thank you, thank you all very, very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, you bet, you bet.
Good luck.
Okay, unfinished business, we have to make a motion to adopt draft resolutions for all four public hearing cases being heard, which is Cohen and Morrison, SUP 20-0578, Magnuson and Huber Trust, 20-1221, Rizzi and Reamer, SUP 20-0555, and Tim.
All right, I have a question.
We've set aside some.
Rizvi, Rizvi and Reimer, are we making, are we adding a condition for the?
Yeah. I think we should hold that one off until we see the language, rather than do it off the top of our heads.
Yeah.
Mr. Lipkin, if you would be so kind and email me when you feel like you have your, your brain hat on, some, some language, I would appreciate it.
All right, I'll talk to you about that in the very near future.
All right.
Okay. So Cohen and Morrison and Magnuson and Huber Dratting Trust.
So.
Make the motion.
So again, Stuart, would you be so kind as to make a motion?
All right, so what's the status of the draft resolutions before I make a motion? Are we adopting them in advance? I mean, they haven't been drafted.
Yeah, they are, you've got them all.
All right, all right, I stand corrected, so I make a motion to adopt the draft resolutions for the following two cases, one is Cohen and Morrison, SUP number 20-0578, and the next one is Magnuson and Huber slash Dratting Trust, planning board case number 20-1221.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we've got that done, and the last two, we're going to wait until we get some more input. And now the best one, favorite one for us all, is to make a motion to approve a draft memo regarding the executive order for us not to hear any more STR cases, at least right away.
Well, there may be a handful, but it'll be much lighter than what it has been, yes.
More substantive.
All right, who wants a second, so I can send that, that memo out?
Second, please.
Okay.
Favor?
Hi.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, aye.
You got it. And now the last thing we got is a Brookside Getway final development fee determination, and I'm not sure which one that is.
Okay, hang on, I got it. In 2017, it was located 51 Millstream in Woodstock.
Yeah.
Resolution was approved, and the only thing hanging was the final development fee. They had done everything, plans are in the file, ready to be signed. But I'm not sure where communication lacked, I have no idea, I wasn't here. So now she came back to the building department, so I'm asking the planning board what they want to do. As you see, I emailed you guys, if I did a final development fee, the amount, it's, it's up to you what you want to do.
If I remember this case, it, it was a accessory apartment that was going to be a studio, an artist studio, and she wanted to have a hot tub or something and a cooking stove, and you couldn't have the cooking stove, but you could have the hot tub, that's the one, right?
Yes, you got it.
Well, if you're going to have a hot tub, it's going to be a big development fee. I don't know, final development fee, it.
I figured it out with the dimensions, because I, I went back and forth with Ellen, and I think it's, what I came up with was, did I tell, $1,355 for a final development fee. But you need to approve that we can just move on and collect the final development fee, or what you want to do.
It is based on the cost of, of the construction, correct?
Yes. Yeah, there's a whole formula that I use.
All right, so using that formula, you've come up with this number?
$1,355.
Well, I propose that, that's what we, that we approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
Move that on, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well.
Brian, you're actually live in person.
So does anybody on the board have any other questions or issues for tonight? And if not.
Stuart, it's just a news item, I, I got an email, I guess everyone else probably did too, that the library bond issue went down.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I heard that.
34 votes.
Point of interest.
I think a lot of people voted thinking they weren't going to have to spend any money on the existing building, and they're wrong.
Yeah, well, that's one of those things.
I know COVID's been tough, you guys have all been great, coming to meetings, showing up, I just want to thank you all. And I know this agenda was hefty, and I've been selectively not making them hefty, so I appreciate all your work and how everyone remembered how to do a public hearing, so thank you, you guys are awesome.
Thank you, and thanks for.
You're great.
Congratulations on your anniversary, first year, you survived.
I survived.
And it's not, this is not so bad, we used to be here later than this, starting at 6:30, so.
So nine o'clock.
Don't move too hard on yourself.
Oh, and also, I, I heard James Conrad on the radio the other day.
Oh.
Yeah, they were on WAMC, they were.
Was that on the police radar?
It was a program, it was pretty good.
Still time.
Inform us of that so we can all be on board.
Oh, okay, I'll do that, I'll.
It was great, no, really, it was great.
I'll advertise that.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Stuart.
Well, everybody stay safe, we're still in the midst of a bad pandemic, but meanwhile, I'll entertain a motion for a German.
So moved.
It's unanimous.
Hi.